Go ahead. Mr. Kilmer, do you, um, how long have you been working with our city attorney? How many years have you known him?
I have known, um, the city attorney since I began as a police chief in the city of Bell Gardens.
So you've previously worked with him? You have a longstanding relationship with him?
I, I work with a lot of attorneys and I've worked with many attorneys for many, many years.
But he's hired you because you know you're, you work independently. So he's hired you for several cases, I figure, correct?
As a point of clarification, Mr. Kilmer was retained by special counsel.
So how many years have you worked with Mr. City Attorney?
I, I don't work directly for anyone. I have my own company. I'm retained by cities, counties, special districts, law firms. As I mentioned before, I've known, uh, Mr. Glassman since I began as a police chief in the city of Bell Gardens in about nineteen ninety-eight.
Would you say that your relationship with-
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, two thousand nine.
Okay. Would you say that your relationship, um, has, has gone farther than the extent of just a professional one?
Oh, it's always been professional. I have a professional relationship, anybody, with anybody that I work with, anybody that retains me. I, and I, you know, I speak to my professional responsibilities and as an attorney as well.
Thank you, Mr. Kilmer.
You're welcome.
If I may follow up on that, Mr. Kilmer, as I recall, correct me if I'm wrong, you, prior to being engaged by special counsel to work on these projects, had you conducted investigations for the Montebello Police Department previously?
Yes.
And also, um, was, and that was well before the investigation regarding Mr. Torres?
Yes, I've, I've conducted investigations for the city of Montebello, uh, going back many years now. Uh, I was previously contracted, um, with Norm Trob, Norm Trob and Associates, and conducted several investigations here in the city of Montebello, uh, starting about ten years ago.
And did that span during the period of the previous administration that you did work for the city of Montebello?
Yes, well before that.
Thank you.
Do my colleagues have any questions, colleague, uh, comments looking down the aisle?
I, I will provide comments. So this investigation back in twenty twenty-two, um, which I wasn't on the council, but it was presented in a public meeting. Therefore, I find it fair to present, to also present this investigation in a public meeting. Many of the facts presented in this investigation are related to a matter in which staff were coerced and threatened to participate in the Torres investigation. And that is, uh, before you, there's a staff report before you, so if you want to read the information. But I do want to highlight some points which were, um, touched on. But numerous city employees were being coerced into filing complaints against Councilmember Torres, even though they expressed no desire to participate or were not, or were feeling harassed, were not feeling harassed by Councilmember Torres. So thank you to the staff that had the courage to step up and work with the investigators to uncover this truth. The city attorney, um, reiterated about the retainer agreement, but I find that, um, you know, uh, that we have no retainer agreement on file, but yet all of this happened. So the ultimate conclusion is that Councilmember Torres violated, uh, numerous and significant city policies and provisions of the municipal hold was found to have no merit. That's the ultimate conclusion of this investigation. So my, my first action when I was on council was to support Councilmember David Torres as mayor. And I was consistently asked by several of the residents that come here, um, almost every meeting, "Do you know he has seventeen complaints against him?" But now we find out that that is not true.
I will just ask the audience to please limit your clapping, but is that, does that conclude your-
That concludes my comments, thank you.
Okay. Do we have any additional comments?
Mayor, if I may?
Go ahead.
Thank you. I think, um, you know, I, um, first I'll say, you know, I, I did participate in the process. I was in council back when that, um, investigation happened and, um, I can only speak for myself as a council member. You know, I, I think it'd be, one, good to know a little bit more about, um, I know there's conversations about some employees were coerced. I mean, is this one, two, was it more? Is there a specific number that you can give? I do agree with a speaker that came up here talking about due process and, um, in that conversation, we, uh, we had to be, I would definitely encourage that the council does set some policies and procedures in regards to due process. If we're going to be fair, Councilmember Jimenez went through a, well, I mean, I don't want to put your name out there, but there was a situation and, uh, we didn't have due process for her either. So we need to put this policy and procedures together for all council. This is, um, and I've shared this with Councilmember Torres at times. This is, for council, it's always, uh, an extremely uncomfortable situation when we bring up this topic in conversation. I know it's not my name that's being, uh, put up, um, uh, for a presentation. However, us, like, as council members, the only ones that can really put any types of, um, checks and balances is, aside from the residents, whether voting for a person, not voting, recall, whatever happens, is us ourselves here in the, up in the dais. At the time, we were presented with information that we felt that there had to be some, um, some limitations and some consequences. Um, I, I do know that you mentioned, uh, that there was, uh, that it was very broad and I agree. But I believe at the time, they stated that for the protection of the employees, right? So, um, with that being said, this is something that, every time this conversation has come up, it's extremely uncomfortable, um, to have this up here on the dais. We get presented with information, we have to, um, do an analysis and make sure that, at the end of the day, we're, uh, making the decision with the information that's presented for us. But with that being said, I think, I think what I can take from this is one clarification on that, because I think it's important for the residents to know, um, there were seventeen complaints. Was it a few? Was it all seventeen? Was it sixteen? And at the same time, I would encourage us to, uh, at some time in the future, to put some policies and procedures to assure that if this ever happens, if one of us does this or, or something like this happens, or there's accusations, that we do have a process that is set up to assure that, um, there isn't any biases or, uh, that we can all analyze this on an objective matter. So, um, yeah, thank you.
Uh, Mr. City Attorney or Investigator Kilmer, can you please clarify? No names are needed or positions, but can you please clarify in terms of the numbers of employees that have come forward? Total number, number, number of employees that have come forward, uh, to shed light on this situation?
Mayor, members of the city council, are we speaking about the personnel matter that I'm in, I am investigating? Or are we speaking about the David Torres investigation report?
Uh, Mr. City Attorney, can you provide guidance in terms of how to best answer this question?
As, as I understand the question, I believe the question is, and it was initially, initially, uh, mentioned by the Mayor Protem, of, you know, there was a report of seventeen different individuals who had complaint, filed complaints. Uh, I think as that's been reexamined, that number is not an accurate number.
No, and, and from a review of the investigative report that was prepared and then presented in the manner that it was to council, in the investigative report, and when you, when you look at that, that document, there are two, uh, complainants, if you will, sources of a complaint. There are two individuals. The remainder of the interviews conducted were listed as witnesses. So there were two sources of the complaint, complainants, and the remainder of the individuals who were interviewed were, had, had information relative to, uh, the conduct of Councilmember Torres, uh, but were not identified as complainants. They were identified as witnesses in the investigation.
Does that-
So, I think I found it here in the report, and please correct me if I'm wrong. It says here, "The findings presented publicly on May third by Special Counsel Demanian were in part inconsistent with the investigative report prepared by the JL Group. The Demanian presentation expressed that there were seventeen complainants filed against Councilmember Torres, uh, when in fact there were, how many to clarify?"
Well, when you look at it from an investigative perspective, in the report, in the, in the JL report, there were two sources of a complaint, listed, two people, two individuals. The remainder of those identified in that investigation were interviewed as witnesses to provide information relative to these complaints. Uh, in the presentation made to council on May third, it's not as clear.
To, to clarify, just to kind of add to that, there were specifically three that were filed without the consent or authorization of those individuals? That is here in your report, so just clarify that that is. There were individuals, employees that did come forward who were named as claimants who did not provide their authority or gave permission to a third-party attorney to file a complaint on behalf of themselves.
There were, there were several.
Okay. Do we have any more comments?
First of all, um, I just think that, um, after three years that this investigation first started, it's incredible that we're just finding this out, that it took this long. But we're here now and, uh, there are, there's definitely still some significant work ahead of us. A lot of the people present today were in present in a recent meeting where, uh, my colleague, Councilmember Angie Jimenez, uh, was making some comments that were contrary to statements that she made in the past. Uh, it was a little bit of a fun exercise to point out the discrepancies between her current views and those that she, uh, forcefully put forward in the investigation against me. So for the edification of those present, I would just like to rehash some of the comments that she said and, and things that I hope apply to this situation. As much as this is about the investigation against me and what me and my family and the community have had to endure for the last three years and the nonsense that we've seen in the media, it also has a lot to do with the employees that suffered this treatment that had to go on working and serving our community and never were able to really voice what really happened to them. So my hats off to those employees who were able to keep it together and, uh, continue their duties and continue to lift up our city despite such extreme circumstances and extreme pressure from top-level officials. But here are some, uh, quotes from Ms. Jimenez on, uh, that May third investigation, first of all. So here, we hear her asking about the veracity of employee testimony for the first time, but let's go back. "We cannot deny and we cannot tell our employees basically, quote, 'You know what? You're ridiculing the city,' end quote." "No, they're coming forward because they're concerned, because they felt the harassment, they felt the hostility from Mr. David Torres, and they have every right, whether it's one or two that spoke up. It's a lot of damage and we have to consider how many thousands of dollars or how many millions of dollars. You know what? We don't want to have to do this, but this is for the workers. And we're here to protect the workers and we're here to ensure we could possibly get sued by some of these employees. What are we going to do then? We cannot go back and tell these workers that what they're saying is just going to go out the door and into the trash." And I'll repeat that again. "We cannot tell these employ, these workers that what they're saying is going to go out the door and into the trash. So tonight, I hope we can take whatever action we need to take so those workers feel safe coming back to work." Wise words by Ms. Angie Jimenez on May third, twenty twenty-two. In the August twenty-four presentation of the resolution against me, she made, uh, additional comments, uh, which I would like to share here. "The bottom line is that he did something to make our employees feel unsafe, threatened and harassed, so we can't discredit our employees for that. People walk into this place and when they see this chaos again, this isn't attractive to anyone. This will not attract good business, this will not attract new business." So again, it's, um, as much as this had to do with me, there are many employees that still work, um, you know, that were in this environment. It's, it's incredible, Mr. Kilmer, the, uh, facts that have come forward. "No retainer, no attachments, no transcripts, no recordings, trumped-up charges, unspecified and vague conclusions. Not for the protection of employees, because there was no policy to which the investigation conformed with. Anyone that was here to witness that presentation can speak to the ways simple questions and requests for information were twisted from possible misconduct to substantiated harassment, conduct that is typical for any council member. Even more egregious, we hear tonight, language was deliberately changed and charged to incite anger from our community. Anger that has spilled into the workplace, day-to-day conversations, news articles, social media, and two elections. This report by Mr. Kilmer substantiates many of my own claims and allegations before, during, and after the investigation against me. What happened to me was unjust and unfounded. But it's even more terrible, our employees suffered a threat to their careers and livelihoods, this fraud and abuse under former top-level officials. I'm relieved these facts and insights have finally come to light through a third-party investigation based on documents and evidence, not hearsay and conspiracy."
Thank you, Councilmember Torres. And to end this item, um, I do want to highlight specifically, um, within that publication of our council agenda packet, some items that I found extremely disturbing, which were briefly covered, but I think repeating and really emphasizing, um, just how egregious this, uh, Ms. Jimenez, do you have a, a comment that you'd like to make? Because throughout the past two minutes, I have just heard you say, "Oh my God, oh this, oh that." Then I ask you respectfully to please not make noise, because when you speak, when you speak, Ms. Jimenez, we don't make noises, we don't huff and puff, we don't do anything to try to distract you. You've been doing that for the past two years that I've sat next to you and continue to do that. Please stop. Please be respectful. Please be respectful. According to the investigation, the attorney who was chosen to investigate Councilmember Torres was specifically selected by parties who had filed complaints against Councilmember Torres. It was never disclosed, closed to the city council that Special Counsel Demanian had previously represented one of the complainants in defending that person in a lawsuit stemming from circumstances during that individual's employment while working for another city. The retainer agreement between the city and the Special Counsel Demanian related to her services surrounding the investigation has yet to be located in the city's files nor offered by the special counsel after being requested to produce such agreement, leading to the city filing a complaint, a bar complaint against this attorney. This is significant to determine who within the city hired Ms. Demanian, who she reported to, and other important elements to ensure a fair and impartial investigative process. Numerous city employees were being coerced into filing complaints against Councilmember Torres, even though they expressed no desire to participate or were not feeling harassed by Councilmember Torres. Complaints were filed on behalf of several employees by a third-party attorney, even though those employees had never retained or authorized that attorney on their behalf to file complaints. Now, as someone who has been a part of this council during this whole investigation and has, who has in the past spoken in defense of, uh, Councilmember Torres, I think it's extremely important to really get to the root of how serious this issue is and how this really strikes at the heart of our city's values. One involving the power of manipulation, retaliation, and coercion. This is something that, four years on being on the council, I have experienced time and time again. This investigation was launched in twenty twenty-two against Councilmember Torres. It was not just flawed, it was orchestrated. And let me be very clear, it was orchestrated with the clear intent to hurt him, humiliating him by calling a special meeting to take away his position of Mayor Protem, retaliating against him and damaging his reputation both professionally and personally. What we know now is alarming, and I'm not, I'm, I don't, I want everyone to just really understand how serious this is. This investigation was not conducted with impartiality or fairness, but it was manipulated to serve personal agendas. Complainants had a hand in selecting the attorney. Conflicts of interest were intentionally hidden. Crucial documents are still missing to this day, and employees were coerced and retaliated into participating. This was a calculated effort to undermine a colleague who dared to advocate for his community, who asked the tough questions and who demanded better for the people of Montebello. What makes this even more disturbing is the extent to which the plot went. The number of complaints was intentionally inflated and several complaints were filed on behalf of employees, again, by a third-party attorney, even though those employees had never retained or authorized this attorney to act on their behalf or to file complaints on their behalf. This investigation was not rooted in truth, but in the interest of high-ranking officials determined to retaliate against someone who challenged the status quo. But I want to take a moment, again, as did Councilmember Torres and Councilwoman Tamayo did, to really recognize the courage of these employees who did come forward to expose this. It takes a month's immense bravery to speak out, especially when the actions of high-ranking officials are at play. Those employees risked their own professional security to ensure that the truth saw the light of day, and for that, they deserve our deepest respect and gratitude. It's completely appalling to think that those entrusted with upholding transparency and justice instead chose to retaliate against someone who was simply doing his job, standing up and asking questions. I personally saw the headlines, the way that this destroyed him personally, his family, and just the criticisms that he faced time and time again on a daily basis simply for asking questions and requesting information. This entire process was a betrayal of our public's trust, but we now have an opportunity to correct that wrong. We not only owe it to Councilmember Torres, we owe it to the brave employees who came forward and really to the community who has been a part of this process for the last two years. So with that, there is an action, um, that I am requesting council to take this evening. And, um, there can be discussion on that as well. But we should consider making the findings, uh, based on this report, recognizing the deficiencies and flaws related to the manner, scope, due process, and conclusions of the report and presentation by outside council to the city council, and also, um, that at the next council meeting, we do rescind the, um, resolution that was passed by the previous council majority admonishing Councilmember Torres, based on the previous investigation that, as we know now, was a sham. Do my colleagues have any other recommendations or would like to add any additional comments to this?
Madam Mayor, um, thank you very much for putting that forward. I would also make, um, a friendly amendment that as, uh, Mayor Protem Melendez reiterated and the community member put forward, that we, uh, act very quickly in implementing new policies and procedures whereby council members' conduct is, is reviewed and, and considered by this council.
So as, um, tho, that motion be read into the record, um, can I please get a motion to approve?
Well, we, we-
Yes.
Take the mayor's motion, you accept the amendment offered by Council, uh, Councilmember Torres?
Yes, I do.
And then we'll need a second to that motion.
Okay.
Second.
And then we can go to, to recall. I'm sorry, to, to roll call.
Mr. City Clerk, can you please, um, do roll call on the motion?
Mayor Protem Melendez? I'm going to abstain. Councilmember Jimenez?
I will not be voting. Um, I was, I was one of the witnesses, so I won't be voting on this.
Councilmember Tamayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye, that passes with three ayes, one abstention, and one no vote. Thank you, um, for those that joined for this item. We will go ahead and now move forward to regular business.
Madam Mayor, why don't we, at this point, adjourn the special meeting?
Yes, I will go ahead and adjourn, adjourn our special meeting at eight thirty-nine PM and we'll go ahead and open up our regular council meeting at eight thirty-nine PM. This now takes us to regular business.
Actually, we, I believe we still need to conduct public comment on non-agenda items.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Kilmer, for your time today.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kilmer.
We will go ahead and conduct regular public comment on, um, non-agenda items. Mr. City Attorney, can you please read the statement of oral communications for that?
Thank you. Members of the public who wish to address the city council tonight on matters that are not on tonight's agenda would have to have filled out a card and turned it in to the city clerk prior to this time. Mr. City Clerk, do we have any, uh, requests to speak on non-agenda items?
Yes, we do have a few speaker cards.
Please move forward.
Uh, first speaker is Armando Rhea, followed by Mrs. Yancy Lopez Perez and Alex Perez.
Good evening, um, Mayor Peralta and city council members. Thank you for giving this his opportunity this evening. We are here with a concern regarding our, um, an area where we reside in the, uh, one hundred block of Sixth Street in Montebello regarding a development project. We're here to, uh, basically describe a few issues, uh, that we've made note of regarding this project. I'll pass it to my wife here as she's made, uh, uh, further notes for this presentation.
Hello, council. Thank you. Buenas tardes, buenas noches. Good evening, everyone and all the residents here of Montebello. I appreciate having the platform this evening. I'm here to talk to every single council member and city employee. I'm here as proxy ownership from First Baptist Church of Montebello, who owns the Word Church LA and Montebello Christian School. We are here to express some ongoing concerns regarding the behavior of workers from the Cesar Chavez project that is located across from the properties that the church, uh, owns in itself. That is First Baptist Church of Montebello, which also owns the Word Church LA and Montebello Christian School and the surrounding properties in that entire block. We have observed that some individuals from the project are remaining on-site after normal working hours, engaging in activities such as drinking alcohol, littering, loitering, and even relieving themselves on bushes in front of our home, other properties, the church, and the school. This has been happening for weeks, so much so that as we walk our properties, we have smelled what we assumed was cat urine. And indeed, it's human urine that is being relieved by these workers from the Cesar Chavez Foundation. And I want to make it clear that I understand that the city has partnered up with this foundation to have affordable homes here in our city. And I understand that we need affordable homes here in the city. And with such a prestigious name behind this foundation, Cesar Chavez, in our city, there would be an expectation of better code enforcement throughout this area. Our extreme disappointment and frustration regarding the ongoing issues of loitering and public urination by the construction workers from Greenfield and the Cesar Chavez Foundation, despite multiple incidents being captured on video, including individuals, again, urinating on these private properties. And again, I have to let you all know that our religious institution, our church, has been a part of the community and standing for over a hundred years. We have been a partner with our city. We have hosted every single council member gladly and your events and your initiatives, and we are excited to do so. But we hate that this has been compromising our facilities. So we hope that more and better code enforcement in this area to keep our area clean and our neighborhood would be taken into initiative. We appreciate your time, thank you so much.
Thank you for your public comment, Mr. City Manager. Can we have a staff member please connect with them over their concerns? Okay. Can we please have the next?
Next speaker is Jaol Hurtado, followed by James Santana.
I just wanted-
I just wanted to make it known that, again, I'm receiving junk mail. And the reason I call it junk mail is because of the fact that, I guess, when you're running to be re-elected, you search and what have my accomplishments been? And when you have no accomplishments, then you have to make up accomplishments. That is listed right here. The swimming pool, that's been done years and years ago. The baseball diamond, it's being worked on right now, but it wasn't by David Torres alone. I'm sure it was all of you. Give credit to the constituents. The senior center, I'm not aware of anything that's happening over there that he's talking about. Historic paving the way project, they've been paving streets for a long, long time. Time-tested, time-proven. We've seen incredible progress since I was elected in March 2019, and we're just getting started. I've seen a lot of lawsuits coming in, and we're just getting started. So there's more to come. I need your vote to see them through over the next four years. More lawsuits. Accomplishments increased revenue year over year? My, this guy's a hero. Begin Montebello Underpass Project? I think that was started with Jack Ajin and was up on the console. Approved Topgolf? I think all of you approved it, not just him. Increased public safety staffing, wow. That guy is incredible. He has a picture here. I don't know how many she paid these people to pose with him. We support David Torres. Funny thing about it is I'm looking over there, and I think most of those people don't live in District Four. So I think the people that live in District Four should be shown in a picture with him. I see Tamayo, I see Scarlett, some other well-known people that I don't live over there. He's even got a dog. Wow. Anyway, that's why I call it junk mail. I suggest that the people of District Four vote for an alternative, so we don't have so much chaos. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peralta. Can we please get the next public?
Next speaker is James Santana.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Peralta, council staff, and fellow Montebello residents. I wanted to start off by sharing that I grew up here in Montebello. I attended our schools. I played in our sports programs. I participated in clubs. And I attended our local church with many of you and your families. I was taught in these spaces to stand up to bullies and not feed their behavior, but to call it out. So I was glad to hear about the recognition of Bully Prevention Month. Bullying does take place in many forms, so I'm glad that you mentioned cyberbullying because it's something that I've experienced over the last two weeks firsthand in this community. Two weeks ago, I came to this council meeting with the intention to speak on the consistent trains that are stopping in District Four. But however, I saw a resident whom I've known to be a bully online using this space to bully the opposition that you have. In that moment, I exercised my constitutional right of free speech, and I held a sign that read, "He is a bully." This was my action in mine alone and in my own personal capacity. It's a reflection of my belief in calling out behaviors that harm our community, especially individuals that attempt to use cyberbullying. This person tried to send me two private messages and also posted about me in an online forum. And the most interesting part is that you did not stop them at the three-minute mark, Mayor, while others that oppose you in your majority quickly get cut off. This person is somebody that you personally thanked in your 2020 swearing-in speech. Montebello raised me to stand up to bullies, but I've also learned something else. Silence in the face of bullying is complicity. Those who support or enable individuals who use public or online forums to spread misinformation, attack others, create division, are just as responsible as the bullies themselves. And leaders should not offer these individuals extra time to spread divisiveness, as you did. I encourage the residents of Montebello to stand together against these types of behaviors. Recognizing Bully Prevention Month is important, but these words are not enough if we don't hold ourselves and others accountable. Allowing certain voices to dominate and spread unchecked toxicity damages our integrity in the city. And those who claim to be preachers in public while acting as prosecutors behind a keyboard should be called out as well. While other communities thrive to attract new economic developments, we are left with lawsuits. Montebello deserves better than this small-minded divisive politics. I will continue to call out this bully, and I'll say no to corporate greed, no to special interests, and no to bullies. Thank you.
Thank you for your public comment. Can we please have the next speaker?
That concludes all speaker cards for non-agenda items.
Okay. Thank you very much for all those who participated in our democratic process. Moving forward, we will be going back to our regular items. So we do have our fiscal year 2024-25 first-quarter budget report, and this will be conducted by Finance Director Mr. Solorza. The floor is yours. It's a different presentation by the city treasurer.
Mayor, thank you, Mayor, City Council. So for tonight, receiving the first-quarter budget update for fiscal year 2024-25, something we've started the last few fiscal years to improve transparency and give an update on where we think we're going to end the year. Now that we're three, almost four, four months in. So this budget report uses actuals from July through mid-October. It's an opportunity for us to recalibrate our projections and forecasts where we're thinking we're going to end this fiscal year. We have some unaudited results from last fiscal year that we can use to kind of judge where revenue expenses might be in this fiscal year. And then, again, this kind of sets up the next report coming February, our second-quarter report, which traditionally are kickoff of our budget season for '25-'26. It's something I want to highlight. Again, this is an award that we've received now for five consecutive years from the Government Finance Officers Association, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award. Again, through leadership and direction from the city council, leadership from the city manager, my fellow executive team members and all the staff. This is a team effort. The city wouldn't be able to receive this award without all of the help that I and my staff get in preparing the budget. So, again, just another feather in the cap that kind of shows the city is committed to producing a good policy document, a good communications document, a good financial document that our residents, anybody else interested in doing business with the city can see what our priorities are, where we spend our money, where we get our revenue from. So I just want to highlight that. So for this fiscal year, okay, we adopted the budget back in June. Seventy-six point seven million in revenue, seventy-six point one million expenditures for the general fund, but a $563,000 surplus. There's been some budget amendments since then, now that we have four months of data. I can update the year-end projections looking to about a $43,200 surplus. Still a surplus, getting smaller. But there are some potential revenue bonuses on the horizon that still haven't come in yet. So, again, a conservative estimate when it comes to revenue, but also looking at increased expenditures throughout this fiscal year. So just to start off with revenue, here's our general fund revenue, historical since 2018, 2019. You'll see a consistent uptick. That big spike in 2022, 2023 was from the sale of the water system. We ceded about $16 million. So we got a spike in revenue there. The good news is that the vast majority of that revenue went to fund balance. And our fund balance at $28 million is the highest our fund balance has been in the recent history, if not for, you know, 100 years plus we've existed. So, yes, that was one-time revenue, but it bolstered our reserves, which, again, the GFOA and other like-minded professional institutions like to see healthy reserves. And then, again, seeing a little bit of a, you know, you kind of return to normal, if you will, in '23-'24, and showing a little bit of uptick in projected revenue versus what our budget was. So this is the composition of general fund revenue. Two major sources, sales tax and property tax. We also get a fair amount of revenue from charges for services, license and permits, and our franchise fees and other taxes. But again, the, you know, over 50% of our revenue comes from two sources, sales tax and property tax. So here's kind of the black and white of the big revenue categories. You'll see sales tax. All three sources are 1%. Monterey Park, Measure H, transaction and use tax, projecting about $26.875 million by the end of the year. Property tax, about $17.2 million. And then you'll see down below some additional sources of revenue. Again, franchise taxes, license and permits, fines and forfeitures. So that's where we get to our $78.6 million estimate, about $2 million more at this point in revenue than what we expected when the budget was adopted. So we've had continued positive property tax performance. We actually, when you look at '22-'23 to '23-'24, we actually had a 7.4% increase in property tax revenue. This, go back one slide. This, the secured property tax amount, $5.6 million, that assumes a 4% increase. So, again, at this point, being very conservative, 4% is supported. But come December, we'll get some updated amounts, numbers, from our property tax consultant. License and permits, we actually saw some positive growth in our cannabis revenue, a net increase of over $500,000 versus projected. And then some continued positive building permit revenue. Again, that's a combination of Montebello Hills, but also we're starting to see normal building permit activity throughout the city. Fines and forfeitures, we're not writing more tickets, but we have offered an additional way for residents to pay their tickets. So our third-party ticket processor isn't always the most accessible, so residents can come in and pay their tickets, actually, in my department in finance, our cashier. So because of that, we're actually seeing more revenue because we're making it easier for others to pay. So what we found was people who got parking tickets weren't unwilling to pay. They were unable to. And so, once we realized that, working with Director Palumbi's team, we were able to offer this new method, and we're seeing a positive uptick there in revenue. And then our cable and commercial refuse franchise revenue is coming in higher, too. So that's, those are the big categories where we're seeing the additional general fund revenue. And then the sales tax focus, again, since it's one of our larger sources of revenue. I do want to point out, we are now current, when it comes to our sales tax sharing agreement with Monterey Park, they passed a transaction and use tax, similar to what we have, Measure H. We've gotten four prior quarters now. We're all caught up. So that increase projection from $900,000 to $1.1 million is now that I've actually seen prior quarters from Monterey Park. I feel confident that that's going to be the trend going forward. And then our Measure H revenue continues to do really well. It tracks at about a 67%, 68% ratio of our 1%. So that adjustment was made to kind of match that. Now, on the other side of the ledger here, we see our expenditures. Again, uptick in expenditures. '22-'23 and '23-'24, we have some one-time settlement agreements. That's where you're seeing that uptake. Actually, each year, we saw $2 million settlement agreements. So you take those out of the equation. It's a much smoother, it's a much smoother graph. And then, on the expenditure side for general fund, there's obviously the commitment to public safety. Police and fire are public safety departments. It's over 50% of general fund expenditures. But again, you know, that is a priority, and that's where our resources are going. Public works, that 20%, that's not CIP. Facilities maintenance, street maintenance, park maintenance. And then general fund expenditures, just kind of a bit of a history here. You'll see the adopted budget was $76.1 million. We've had some amendments since then, about a couple million dollars in amendments, and then you'll see the projected amount at about $78.6 million. So a little bit about the amendments. Since the budget was adopted, we've had $2.516 million in budget amendments. The majority of them, $1.74 million, is carryovers of work done in the prior year. For example, police department is working hard to do the security camera project that was approved by council last year. It's a multi-year project. A majority of that, you know, about $400,000 of that project costs were carried forward, so it's continuing. Fire department's still working on some of their finalized SCBA purchases. That's something we've pulled forward as well. Engineering services and public works, street maintenance. So, again, the majority of that budget amendment is from work started last fiscal year that, through our normal year-end close process, we just carry the purchase orders forward. And then, so far, throughout, since July, we've had about $378,000 in city council-approved budget amendments. Police department, their server room HVAC, additional resources for fire department grant writing, and then the City Park baseball field renovations. And then, as a recommendation several years ago from the state auditors, but also just to promote transparency, these are Hilton Garden Inn and Home Two Suites, the cities, to the hotels that we own. The city owns these hotels. And here's some historical performance. You'll see those kind of COVID years of 2019, 2020, 2020, 2021, where we saw deficits at the hotels. By looking at last year, Hilton Garden Inn finished over $1 million to the good. Home Two Suites, almost $1 million to the good, and projecting similar results for this fiscal year. So, you know, just as a radiation here, all the debt service, all the operating expenses are paid utilizing, in this case, the Hilton Garden Inn revenue account. There is no general fund subsidy of the hotel. Average daily rate continues to be stable. Occupancy rate at this time, mid to high 70%, which is much higher than during the COVID pandemic years. And then the Home Two Suites, again, restock occupancy rates about 84%. And just like Hilton Garden Inn, all of the debt service, all their operating paid for by their ongoing revenue. No subsidy by the general fund. So, again, just a quick update, quick briefing. There'll be more as we get to second quarter. But thank you. I appreciate it, and open for questions.
Thank you, Director Solorza. Just kind of looking down here, do we have any questions? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
All right, just one quick question. Thank you for the presentation. Any reporting on Topgolf just yet, or?
Actually, thank you. That was in my notes. I skipped it. So, yes, Topgolf has been open since May, so we would have several months of sales tax information. I actually met with our sales tax consultants this morning. They do not have any results yet from May or June. What our consultant told us is a lot of times with these new, with new vendors, especially big ones like this, it takes a quarter for them to get into the system. So when we, we will get results for July, August, September. In January, I anticipate having at least five months of Topgolf results by then to be able to share. So to that point, those sales tax projections include nothing from Topgolf because I have no data yet to make that projection. So, thank you, Mayor Protem.
Thank you. Any, yes, Councilmember Tamayo?
Yes. So if we go back two slides, it was the Home Two Suites, right there. So it went from so the bottom line, I was just looking at the bottom line for the Home Two Suites on '22-'23 at $4.1 million?
Yes.
And then it goes to, like, almost $1 million?
Yes. So their expenditures ticked up from '22-'23 to '23-'24. From what I could tell, it looked like in the personnel area. So I think they started to, to, a couple things, increased staffing, but also with the state's increase in the minimum wage, I think it's a little, some compounding factors there. And I think there was also some one-time repair and maintenance work done in 23, 24. The hotel has been open for almost six, for six years now, so I think there was some more maintenance work done, hence the expenditures increased by almost $3 million.
Right. Thank you.
Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Tagging on to my colleagues' comments and then a question. So when it comes to our hotels, if we could get a little bit more of a detailed report where that discrepancy comes from, just identifying those increased costs, that would be appreciated. As to the Mayor Protem's question on Topgolf, if we could also receive information on how our golf course is performing, or golf courses, I should say, both the par three and the regulation course? And just as a question, clarification, if you can remind us when the sales tax agreement with the Monterey Park marketplace expires?
The good thing is it doesn't, it's in perpetuity, so we'll be getting 18%.
Okay, that's, that's what I recall, but some people have had a question about that, so just wanted to make sure, so into perpetuity.
And Councilmember, just, you read our mind, our Parks and Recreation Director was already, we're already planning on doing a presentation and update regarding our golf course and everything that's happened there. We're planning for the first meeting in January. We wanted to give enough time for us to accurate projections. And then on Topgolf, I mean, we don't have sales tax projections yet, but just, you know, we have our, our system that kind of tracks how many people. On average, we're averaging 56,000 people per month that are attending the Topgolf, so it's a significant number that are people, that are coming in and out.
To tag on to a question that Councilmember Torres brought up, the 18% for what we get in terms of the Monterey Park area of businesses there, does that include the, their, does that include, that 18%, does that include the new tax measure that we, or what percentage of the new tax measure that they just passed do we receive from that, sorry?
Yeah, no, I get it. So it's 18% of the Monterey Park marketplace?
Yes.
So, so take that, so it's all the business in the Monterey Park marketplace. So we get 18% of the 1% Bradley Burns, and we get 18% of the new 3/4% Measure MP. So hence the additional $200,000 we're seeing in this fiscal year.
And Mayor, I do want to commend Michael, he's modest, but it's something that he, he's been tracking, working with our neighbors for a while, it didn't happen, let's just say he, he did a little nudging and, you know, did a lot of work to get us to this point, but thankfully, we're going to get additional revenues.
Yeah, thank you so much on your work on that, Director Solarza. And just to say, very, definitely looking forward in terms of just some updates when it comes to our hotels, our different enterprises such as our, our golf course. And then, I know January, we won't have these numbers, but moving forward later down the, hopefully the end of the next fiscal year, we might have some numbers for Tesla that should be opening the end of this year, is that correct, Mr. City Manager? Tes- Tesla will be opening the end of this year?
We're tracking for the end of this year.
Okay, yeah, I'd be just very curious to see what those numbers would look like later down the line, I know by January, we won't have that. But beyond that, just very thankful for your presentation today, thank you for keeping us in the loop in terms of the healthy budget that we have going on here, and just your projections that you're foreseeing. With that, we will go ahead, and can I please, let's see, okay, I think there's multiple requests here, so can I receive a motion to receive and file this agenda report and presentation, amend the compensation plan and table of organization, resolution number 2480 for certain police, fire, and transit department classifications, amend the master position control to reflect changes in the table of organization in the transit department, approve new and updated job classifications for positions in transit, finance, admin, and if there are any amendments or additional actions that my colleagues would want to include, you can go ahead and propose that.
Motion to approve as stated.
Okay, we got a motion, can I please get a second?
My second.
Second by Councilmember Tomayo, can I please get real call, Mr. City Clerk?
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Perata?
And I vote aye, thank you very much, Director Solarza and your team. Moving forward, we do have item number eight, consideration approval to award an exclusive residential franchise for residential solid waste and recycling services pursuant to RFP number 2400. We have a presentation by President of MCA Consultants, Mr. Jeff Camera, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, what we have before you today is coming forth, if you recall, earlier this year, we came to you with the notification that the existing residential franchise with Athens Services was expiring in, on February 11th of 2025, and as a result of code and as a result of the procurement process, that it was required that a new solicitation and an RFP be presented. At that point, at the, at the direction of council, we did develop with staff a solicitation which included services that were essential to the city, but also that brought up essential legislation to make sure that we had compliance with all of the provisions that have been established by CalRecycle. That, at the direction approval of council, that was actually released on May 23rd, and that was open to all of the existing 12 haulers. There was no discrimination, there was no, anybody, everybody had the same opportunity to provide that. It was also conducted in a very open process, and that was one of the things that was established early on, that this solicitation be conducted with the utmost clarity, that it be conducted with integrity, and that every hauler that's currently licensed in the city have the opportunity to provide questions, to get responses, and also have the same opportunity in which to present on that. It also required very stringent compliance with Senate Bill 1383, which was probably one of the most comprehensive legislations when it comes to solid waste, that has been since the original AB 939, which was established in 1989. The purpose of this actually includes organic waste, and it's not something, it's one of those, it's not like you would think of normal recycling, which you can take it, it's easy to sort, this is something which is a much more comprehensive program, and it also lends to a variety of, of different programs, which we'll discuss in just a moment. The other thing that the residential RFP covers is it standardized services and provided core services for the residential sector. Under this RFP, it was for residential, single-family, duplexes and triplexes would be covered under this, under this solicitation. Okay, we'll go with this one. So the RFP was released in May of 2023, we did receive questions by the deadlines, those were responded, those questions were provided to the city clerk, so during this whole process, city staff was not involved after the release of the RFP, with the exception of receiving the questions from the city clerk and responding to them. All questions were then presented to all of the haulers, regardless of whether or not they noticed, they issued a notice of intent to, to go forward. The, the responses to the RFP, there were conducted, there was a three-member council, I mean, a three-member panel that conducted these, the city clerk distributed those to the three-member council, at no time did any of the three members talk or consult on this, each one rated them individually, and it was set up so that they had a full understanding of what was going to happen, okay? There were some general bullet points that were provided to them, which were given to them as a benchmark, to say, this type has a weighted capacity. There were 19 categories in which were identified for compliance, and it was also done into three different categories. One was for overall services provided, the second one was provided for cost, and the third one was provided for the ability to meet state mandated diversion percentages. Let me get back to that one, sorry. Under this, of the proposals, the city clerk did receive three proposals from Athens Services, from NASA Services, and also from Ware Disposal. Each one of those companies provided fully compliant proposals, those were evaluated, and what we came up with was the consolidated scores that you see on your screen here, those are the averages of all the scores. So once all the scores were put together, Athens came out at a total score of 241, NASA Services came in at 212, and Ware Disposal came in at a total of 193. Now, it's important to note that of these, when you're looking at the weighting criteria, the scope of services was rated the highest, it was worth a total of 200 points, and that was done to make sure that this was not necessarily solely rated on cost, but also to make certain that the services that were essential for compliance were adhered to. The rate structure and points assigned for the structure, since there were three, where 50 points were awarded to the lowest bidder, and so on down 45 to the next low, the next bidder, and 40 points to the third. Based on that, the decision was made before you, those were presented to, the raw findings were consolidated and presented to the city manager for consideration for presentation to council. Are there any questions?
I will go ahead and just look to my colleagues to see if there are any questions. Okay, we have Mayor Protem Melendez.
Thank you for the presentation, and for the whole process, very detailed, it was a transparent process throughout. Just have two comments. In the past, I've brought up the possibility of having three bins, additional blue bin for the recyclables, and we have the black and the green. The reason, part of the reason why, and I know this can affect the cost, and I would probably direct our, or we can get consensus, or have a conversation with my colleagues in regards to what the additional cost associated with that might be, but I do think it's something that we should kind of, that we should have a conversation, at the very least. Part of it is, it can keep trash away from the streets. I know that when folks throw their recyclables in the black bin, there are some folks out there in the community that will throw the trash, get some of the recyclables, and it can get a little messy out there. I think having a blue bin can take care of that, that at least folks don't have to go through, through the trash to get some of the recyclables. And also, you know, maybe, I don't know, maybe there's some cross-contamination with the recyclables and the trash, and kind of just having a conversation. So I just want to have a conversation and see if, at least we can get a little bit of, just feedback and see if that's a possibility. And I'll stop there, and I'll have some other comments too.
Mr. City Manager, would you like to respond?
Yeah, yeah, we're trying, and also a clarification question, Jeff, the, the current rate that is proposed by, by Athens, does that incorporate a three-card system currently?
Yes, it did. So all of these services did include a three-card service under state legislation, under, under basically guidelines, it allows the city to have flexibility in the type of system they have, but this was put forth for a municipal solid waste container, a recycling container, and an organics container. That was put across as a standardized service for all.
May I tag on just really quickly, was the price that being, that was presented to us, was that for a three container or a two container?
That was for what was included in the RFP, which was a three container system.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
Yeah, so I think my follow-up to that would be that, that set a rate of, of three containers, however, if the council would go into two containers, then that price would eventually drop or change a little bit, so.
Yeah, the process, in terms of what Jeff and team put together this, the information, they scored everything, they did the evaluation, and the recommendation is obviously based, based on their findings, but one of the, one of the, one of the next steps in terms of council were to approve, you delegate the authority for me and staff to go ahead and negotiate the final terms of the contracts. Through that evaluation criteria, we're going to go ahead and go line item by line item in terms of what the needs are, the city, and correlate that with, with the, what was recommended in the RFP, or what was proposed in the RFP, right? One of those key factors being the fact that, you know, we, if council wants to go in a direction of exploring a three-card system, we're happy to hear you out on that, and it's something that we can consider. Currently, the city does have a two-card system, right, so there's a price differential. But again, and I think it's important for you to know, the rate that is being proposed right now is for currently a three-card system, which is what you're, you're alluding to right now, Mayor Protem. But we would welcome suggestions or feedback or direction from the council.
Madam Mayor, I have a comment on the idea.
Go ahead.
So I appreciate the Mayor Protem's position and the points that he's making on the public perception of having blue bins, there's a lot of confusion around the black bins that we're able to recycle in those. I think that this is one of those issues, because as one of our residents, I believe rightly pointed out in a recent meeting, the ways that trash fees are increasing due to regulations, due to all the various economic factors that we face, that we be sensitive to those price increases. For that reason, I am very, to make the decision whether blue bins would actually be effective, or if they're just somehow a value statement and more of a moral uplifting kind of, kind of implementation. I'd be very curious to understand if blue bins actually do increase the diversion of recyclables. I'd be interested in understanding how, what the difference is, how significant it is in terms of recycling, as well as the challenges that are posed by mixed waste. So those would be my questions before going down that path, because from my understanding, our current waste taller is able to effectively take out recyclables, and so unless my understanding is incorrect, always happy to be corrected, but those would be some of my initial comments.
Councilman, those are all great questions, and to answer your question is not a very simple one. And let me put it this way, you just mentioned something, Councilman Torres, about the existing hauler being able to do a two-bin system. However, some of the other haulers that are currently licensed in the system, in the city, are unable to do a two-bin system. Where they, because of their facilities, because where they take it, because of their reliant on third-party to recycle that material, they are required to collect it separately than they do the regular trash. So as a result of this, the only way that we could legitimately level the field and give everybody an apples-to-apples comparison on services and rates, was to first establish a three-card system, and then look at what are the alternatives or possibilities of bringing that, kind of bringing that down, but understanding that the premise behind this was primarily on service, and being able to be kind of a good steward of the environment and of what we needed in the services to make sure that the city was maintained. As far as your other question, as to whether or not blue bins are beneficial or a two-bin system, that really depends on the facilities that it's brought to, and to have a state-of-the-art facility that can sort that out, obviously that's beneficial. There are additional costs of having to put a, another truck on the street, there's greenhouse gas, there's emissions, there's various factors that tie into that, but in a sense, it really just depends on the type of system that you have, that you're monitoring.
If I may add, there's obviously a lot of factors for council to consider, cost being one of them, right, increasing from a two-card system or a three-card system, but, and the other factor for us to consider, as a municipality, the logistics and the actual implementation of a three-card system, right? So the real-world impacts of, for example, in our heavily impacted communities, with parking is at a premium, as this, there's concerns in terms of having two carts, you know, those parking impacts, so just as a consideration for council to know, right? Adding another bin would be another, another layer, that doesn't mean that we, we can't figure out, we can't make it work, but just, you know, long-term implementation, long-term costs, logistics, those are, those are factors that we, we have to consider, and again, that's, that's part of the process that we go through in terms of negotiating the final terms of the agreement.
Mayor Protem Melendez, do you have any additional comments, questions?
No, well, yeah, I do, sorry. Just one comment, I, the current vendor, they are extremely proactive in our community in, you know, when there's events and sponsorships and all that, I would like to see a little bit more on the community benefit. I would like to see a little bit more on the community benefit component. You know, see if there's any bulky item pickups or, you know, more scholarships. But definitely more of a community impact for our residents. I think that would be something too that we can.
Jeff, maybe do you want to touch on some of the requirements we had in the RFP in terms of community benefits or things they were specifically asking for our city from the contractor?
Absolutely. Mayor Protem, that's a very good question. And one of the things that we took into consideration on this are exactly what you're saying with bulky items and cleaning. Under this program, there is provisions for bulky item pickups from residents, as they're in now. But the other thing that was offered in this is additional item cleanup after collections and things like that, so that they can address it with a dedicated request line, so residents can make it more easily. They can say, hey, I have these bulky items, but so they have, Athens has put forth a very robust and a very beneficial system for that. The other thing that's, that's also on here is part of the SB 1383 and the organics program is how does that get back to the city? And one of the things that was in the RFP is being able to return some of that, some of the materials that's collected out of here and making that available for not only city projects, but also for residents, kind of giving that back to them for mulch projects and things like that that they have around to help reduce the cost of going to a Home Depot or a Lowe's or a garden store, something else, having to buy some of that. So, these are all things that we've, that we have put in there as well.
I think they're also supportive of, for example, Earth Day event, right? Which is, this year, we probably did one, and we wanted to, you know, expand it even more so. But our, our company has been supportive of this event, and these are things that we're going to be requesting moving forward in terms of community benefits.
And every year when we do that, that we do have the Earth Day event, they are one of the first companies that kind of steps up when we do that and offers however many bins we need, locates them at parks and things like that. So, they have been providing those services. And those services are, have been provided to the city as they are now free of charge.
Thank you.
Do any other colleagues have any additional questions, comments? No? Okay. And then just, Mr. City Manager or Mr. Camera, may you guys please touch on the franchise fee and how that is new to this contract?
It's another very good question, Mayor. Historically, the, only the franchise fee has been on the commercial sector. Under this, under this new agreement, there will be a 16% franchise fee that will be included on the residential sector as well. So, that will be 16% of grocery receipts that will come to the city as far as, as for, kind of as the, as the right, I guess, as the franchise fee of doing business in the city.
Thank you. And to clarify, this is something that's been, is common in other cities, but we just, we haven't been, had the luxury of benefiting from till now?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you for that. The only comment I will provide is I just do want to commend you as well as our city manager in terms of getting this process and moving us through this process in a way that did uphold integrity and transparency. I've always been told that trash contracts are the most controversial contracts, and to really have been guided in a way, step by step through this process, has been integral to making this as smooth as possible. You know, we were very transparent in terms of releasing the RFP, in terms of ensuring that all applicable haulers were invited to apply, as well as actually publishing the grading and scoring, which in some cities you don't see that. So, I do want to just commend everyone here for really guiding us through a very transparent process and taking us to a place where it's not as difficult as I've seen it in other cities. So, I'm very, very much surprised that it's gone very smoothly, and I think it's really based on the foundation that you all have set in terms of getting us here in this manner. And so, with that, I will go ahead and call for a motion to approve the item.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, can I please get a second for the motion?
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Jimenez. First motion by Mayor Protem. Can I please get a roll call?
Mayor Protem.
Before, just for the record, there was no request to speak on this item from the public, correct?
No, we had no speaker cards. Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye, and item passes. So, that now takes us to, give me a second here. Item number nine, yes. Item number nine, approved letter of engagement to master retainer agreement number 4,000 with K O A Corporation for enhanced design of three existing signalized intersections that are part of the adopted first mile, last mile master plan. And, sorry, we have a presentation by Director of Transportation, Mr. Soria, and Transit Planner, Mr. Machuca.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This evening, we do have our Transit Planner with us, Mr. Alfredo Machuca. Alfredo is not only an employee here at Transit, but also a constituent, born and raised here in the city of Montebello, Shore High School alumni, and his, his efforts on this first mile, last mile plan were recently recognized as this, my, this plan did receive 2024 APA Award of Excellence. So, Alfredo is with us this morning to present on this item.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Alfredo Machuca, Transit Planner for City of Montebello's, Montebello Bus Lines. I'll be presenting on the first last mile plan for the city. Just kind of to set a preface, the plan began development in September 2022, and it was finalized in December 2023. This plan was made possible by SCAG's Sustainable Community Grant Program, and the city remains grateful for the opportunity to be able to do such a plan. So, the purpose of this plan is to create a roadmap assisting residents and commuters to travel safely on their first and last mile trips within the city through a Vision Zero approach, using TIMs collection data to guide recommendations. Now, what makes this a Vision Zero approach? Traditionally, first last mile plans would be done, right? But what makes this a little different is using TIMs. That stands for Transportation Injury Mapping System. It's a repository that UC Berkeley keeps on collision data, you know, throughout the area. So, we really honed in on injury data to kind of guide our recommendations. Public transportation rarely stops directly in front of a passenger's origin or destination. The first last mile refers to the distance to and from a transit stop between your origin and your destination. There's a nice little graphic that kind of shows a better picture of what that looks like for the ordinary transit user. A long-range road route guided by Zero, Vision Zero approach to provide traffic strategies, strategies that will guide future infrastructure projects and safely conduct people through public transit. There are five priority projects for intersection improvements and one bicycle neighborway. Constituents were asked and polled about what type of transportation treatments they would like to see on the projects proposed. The city did conduct surveys on constituents. We did receive 209 surveys on different things that constituents would want to see. There are five projects, one at Beverly and Maple, the second at Whittier and Garfield, the third at Whittier and Montebello, the fourth at Washington and Greenwood, and the fifth, a neighborway, trisecting the city on an east-west corridor. Neighborway is a little bit more than just a bike lane. It is, it does have facilities, it has signage, it has bicycle facilities as well. So, it's, it's more than just your traditional class one through four bikeway. Anything with a single asterisk indicates that Transit will be fully funding the project. Anything with a double asterisk, it is projected that Metro will be funding that project through a 3% local match, through the extension of the East Side, E, or, sorry, the Gold Line project. Montebello will be receiving a Metro Transit station specifically at Greenwood and Washington, which is the extension of the Gold Line. So, Metro does have a program where a city can contribute 3% towards a project, and then Metro would fund the rest of the project. That would be number four, the one with the double asterisk. Intersection treatments that constituents want to see were hardened center lines, speed cushions. Obviously, those speed cushions emergency friendly. When the plan was being made, we did speak to fire and police regarding, to see if they would be okay with speed humps. Speed cushions were much more recommended. Why? Because emergency vehicles can't pass through them with no real slow down in speeds. Pedestrian nose aprons, truck aprons, high-visibility crosswalks, and lead pedestrian intervals. For the neighborway, we are looking at sharrows, speed cushions, obviously emergency friendly as well, bike boulevard signage to indicate that there is a neighborway through the city, shikans, and slow street implementations. The city has applied for a SCAG Quick Build Grant to be able to fund this project as well. And that completes my presentation. I'd be happy to take any questions, if there are any.
I'll go ahead and look down. The pile of your dice, no questions, no comments? Okay, just, I'll go ahead and provide a comment. I'm just really excited to have this item coming forward. As someone that has continuously talked about traffic and safety and really has tried to push forward the Vision Zero strategy here in the city of Montebello, it's really nice to kind of see this come to life. You know, Montebello has extremely dangerous intersections, and I think the overall goal and intention is to decrease fatalities, decrease accidents, and really, really connect our city in ways that are safe for both pedestrians and bicyclists and motorists. And so, to be able to have these specific projects coming forward and be funded, I think is a, is a big win for our community in terms of reaching our goals of providing safer intersections and safer neighborhoods and streets. And so, I saw this coming forward as a plan early on that you've worked really hard and always have to give you a shout out for winning that planning award based on this first mile, last mile master plan that was created, and now seeing these specific projects coming to life. So, just very excited, very thankful for our Transit Department and all those that have really got us to the, those that have gotten us to this moment, and looking forward to this long-awaited project, projects to move forward. So, with that, I will actually make the motion to approve this item. If I can please get a second.
Second.
Okay, second by Councilmember Torres. Can I please get roll call?
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye, thank you very much. And then that now takes us to our consent calendar. Do we have any, one, do we have any public comments? And two, Mr. City Attorney, can you please poll council for any items of interest?
Yes.
Yes, Mayor, we do have speaker cards for agenda, item number 10.
10.
Item number 10?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. At this time, consent calendar would be considered. Items 10 through 17, 17 with the exception, we pulled 14, right?
10.
10.
No, to be held over, what was held over? Okay, thank you, okay. So, with that, I'll poll council. Mayor Protem Melendez?
No items.
Councilmember Jimenez?
No items.
Councilmember Tomayo?
No items.
Councilmember Torres?
Item 11.
And Mayor Peralta?
No items.
Thank you. At this time, it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve items 11 through?
12.
17.
12 through 17.
Sorry?
Sorry, it was 12 through 17. Councilmember Torres polled item number 11.
Oh, I'm sorry, turn it up, okay. My apologies. 12 through 17.
Yes, can I please get a motion to approve items 12 through 17?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protem, can I get a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Torres. Mr. City Clerk, can you please conduct roll call?
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye, so that now takes us to item number 10, adopt resolution designating Fourth Street from Victoria Avenue to its terminus as a preferential parking district. Can we please conduct public comments?
Yes, Mayor. I do apologize if I do mispronounce anyone's name. Veronica Sakian, and then followed by Amy Shimurian.
Good evening, good evening, Mayor, City Manager, and City Council Members. My name is Veronica Sahakian, and I reside at 609 North Fourth Street. I've lived there for over 20 years. I'm here today on behalf of my fellow neighbors requesting a preferential parking permit for our cul-de-sac, Fourth Street and Victoria. I'm here formally expressing my concerns regarding the illegal parking and associated issues we've had for several months. I have observed, observed an alarming increase in vehicles parked illegally, which not only causes double parking and traffic, but also creates significant safety hazards for our residents and pedestrians. Moreover, I have witnessed troubling activities, including drug use, sexual activities, all occurring during the evening hours when there are cars parked there that are not the residence of the cul-de-sac. We have also a presence of an illegal business, such as sales of vehicles that have been conducted on our street for the last several months. I want to say at least for a year now. We have pictures, we have proof, we have video of these folks on our street. And what they're doing is the individuals are selling the cars, they're conducting the business transactions outside of our homes, includes trading of money, pink slip transfers, washing vehicles, and oil changes, and maintenance of those vehicles happening right in front of our homes. As a longtime resident who pays taxes and contributes to this community, I find it unacceptable that there is little to no parking available for our residents. It is disheartening to see our streets taken over by individuals who do not respect our community's rules and well-being. I urge the council to take immediate action to address these items, including increased enforcement of parking regulations and permitted parking from 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. Our community deserves a safe and accessible environment to all its residents. Thank you for your attention to this matter and hope that we can get some resolution tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we please have the next?
Speaker is Amy, followed by Leanna Marturozian.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name is Amy Shimurian. I live at 617 and a half North Fourth Street. I'm here to address a growing concern on our street, the impact of resident, residential street parking. The issue has risen from it. In recent months, I have seen multiple vehicles on our street with individuals sleeping in their cars, parking on our streets until it is street cleaning day. I have also witnessed numerous cars being bought, fixed, and sold on residential streets. Most days, it's really hard to find parking. We have to park on Fifth Street, on Third Street, and walk to our house, which is not safe. So, that's my concern, and thank you for hearing me.
Thank you. Can we please have the next?
Next speaker is Leanna, followed by Arthur.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Leanna Marturozian, and I reside at 617 North Fourth Street. I'm here to express my growing concern about the worsening parking situation on our street. Over the past few months, the problem has escalated. In addition to the increase of random vehicles such as stolen or for sale cars, I've personally encountered unsettling activities, including drug use and inappropriate behavior. As someone who often comes home late from work, I frequently struggle to find parking near my home and end up parking on neighboring streets. This not only adds to the inconvenience, but also makes me feel unsafe in a community that I've lived in my entire life. I urge the council to address this issue so that residents can feel secure and comfortable in their own homes once again. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Arthur, followed by Sean Minazian.
Hi, council members and everyone else present today. My name's Arthur Huang, and I live on Fourth Street as well, along with my neighbors who just came before me at 605. I've observed this individual and some of his associates working on their cars, doing oil changes on our streets, and parking all the vehicles that he brings back, you know, for sale to people illegally selling them, and, you know, not contributing tax revenue to the city. It's all very disturbing activities and taking up parking space in our neighborhood. And I'd like to see Montebello approve our street area as a preferential parking district so that, you know, we can curb this behavior. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Huang.
Our final speaker, Sean Minazian.
Good evening. My name is Sean Minazian. I was born and raised in the city of Montebello. Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, please approve a request by Montebello residents on the North Fourth Street to improve- on the North Fourth Street to improve the health and safety on our block. There have been a number of happenings which seriously affect the health and safety in our street, namely, non-residents put trash on the street where we park and leave it there. And non-residents park their cars for four to five days and do not move them from the street. This includes homeless people and their cars. I've seen a homeless person even park in our driveway before. I have pictures for all these and I'd like to pass them out. Excuse me, can you pass them out? Oh, me? All right. Okay. Non-residents do mechanical work on their cars and change tires too, as well. I've seen oil spilled on the street and some car parts were left over on the street. And this is not safe for like kids or elderly people walking. I have pictures of those too. Also on our street, non-residents make car sales as well. I have seen this happening for like a year now. Parking is also difficult for caregivers of the elderly on our block and for emergency services when they arrive. For example, some nurses come to visit my grandma and they always have a problem finding a parking spot. Whenever emergency services come and they park like wrong, you know, they park, they're... We use, we see used drugs on the sidewalk and on the street as well, many of times. I have seen larger parts of vehicles that take up, take up space and they're not supposed to park on residential streets. And also such happenings affect the property value of residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Minazin. That concludes public comments. So this is now at council level for any comments or emotion. Go ahead.
I'd just like to make some comments. This specifically, the district that I represent, District 3. I typically don't like permit parking because I feel like it puts the issue to another city, to another, to another block, and it just keeps moving forward, forward. For this specific situation though, I think the way it's, it's in a cul-de-sac, it's very much warranted. So I wholeheartedly support having permit parking here. I do want to also direct and with our city manager, if we can also look into some of the other issues and concerns in regards to some illicit legal activity that's going on there and maybe we can stop by with our police department, community outreach team and give them some pointers and have a conversation to the, with the community there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I'll go ahead and take a, if there are no other comments, I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. Motion by Mayor Protem. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Jimenez. Can I please get roll call?
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Aye.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye and the item passes. Moving forward, we do have item number 11, amend the fiscal year 2024-25 capital improvement program budget to appropriate carryover funds for various projects. Councilmember Torres?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a short comment. My concerns on this item are purely numbers and timing, significant amendments so early in the fiscal year. There are elements that I'd feel much more comfortable approving later in the fiscal year when our projected numbers are more certain. And that concludes my comments.
Okay. Thank you for your comments, Councilmember Torres. Can I get a motion to approve or amend any amendments?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Motion to approve by Mayor Protem Melendez. Can I get a second?
I second.
Okay. Second by Councilmember Tomayo. Can I please get roll call?
Mayor Protem Melendez?
Aye.
Councilmember Jimenez?
Aye.
Councilmember Tomayo?
Aye.
Councilmember Torres?
Nay.
Mayor Peralta?
And I vote aye. And that now takes us to AB, yeah, AB 1234 travel reports, who my colleagues have. Yes? Go ahead, Mayor, sorry, Councilmember Torres.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just want to report back on my time at the League of California Cities last week in Long Beach. As usual, an outstanding event, got to see colleagues across, from across the state of California, all the way from the tip of our northernmost edge, all the way below us to San Diego. The information was really interesting on public safety and the various measures that we can take to improve our city. And that concludes my report.
Okay. Thank you very much. We do not have any council orals this evening, so that does take us to the adjournment of our meeting. Thank you all for your patience. I will go ahead and call for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Torres. We are adjourned at 9:50 AM. Thank you all for participating.